Great, we're on the record. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, May 27th, about seven o'clock. We have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tonight with a public hearing and a general meeting. And we are here in Town Hall Room 206. We have a pretty light agenda tonight, so hopefully it goes quick. The applicants cooperate.
We'll do our best. Be ripping through it for you.
Fantastic. First, I'm going to agenda is proposed amendments to zoning regulations, COZR number one, 2025, put forth by Old Kings Highway North, 104 LLC and Old Kings Highway North, number 108 LLC, also known as PL 25-79. Proposal to amend section 766 of the Darian zoning regulation to increase the maximum floor area of dwelling units within the DB design business zone from 1,000 square feet to 1,250 square feet and to allow development on smaller lots less than 20,000 square feet within the DB zone to have up to eight two-bedroom units with no single-bedroom units. The proposal to amend section 766 of the regulations to reduce the rear yard setback for development complying with the inclusionary zoning regulations, which is section 580 from 25 feet to 10 feet, where certain findings are made by the commission. Proposal to amend section 906 of the regulations to reduce the parking setbacks for the development from 10 feet to zero feet, where certain findings are made by the commission. Proposal to amend section 945 of the regulations to reduce or eliminate permanent landscaping requirements where certain conditions and findings are made by the commission. The full text of the zoning regulations amendment is on file and available in the town clerk's office and the planning zoning office for inspection and online at darianct viewpointcloud.com. That was a big one. I guess you don't like our zoning regulations.
Well, we need, in order to do what
Welcome, please just say your name.
... of Wadiglis and off for the record.
Thank you, sir.
I'm representing Sean Shea, who's the principal of the applicants, the Old Kings Highway North, 104 LLC and Old Kings Highway North, 108 LLC. Sean's here with me along with Kurt Hoenstein from Landtech, our engineer, and we've got Matt Pop, our landscape architect, John Canning, our traffic engineer will be joining us. We're going to do this in one presentation, unless you guys want to break it up. My thought is, start with you.
Between this application, the other application?
Yeah.
Well, you can keep going, stand there.
Yeah.
When you're basically done, we'll open up the other application.
Okay.
But I think we can probably close the first one. And to be candid, Old Kings Highway has been on the docket for 15 years to convert it to multifamily housing. It was done under Eric Voight's watch and Fred Contse's watch, so I think this is really the first one that we're going to see on this street because it's a dead office district home. And one of these houses was residential rooms and office buildings.
Correct. And they are derelict. They've been sitting vacant for a number of years. And frankly, Sean is looking to redevelop this and hopefully he can do so in an economic way that works. But we originally proposed 12 two-bedroom units. And to do that, we were having units on the first floor. And that required parking outside, and that expanded our footprint substantially in the developed site area. And we were pretty close to the wetlands, the water course that goes around the property. And EPC said, no. So we went back to the drawing board. We're now here with eight units in two buildings. And the units are on the second and third floors. So we have two buildings, each has four units in them, four in one, four in the other, parking underneath. And all the parking fits underneath those building footprints. And we get two extra spaces, flat lot spaces outside for visitors, plus in this plan, we have a legitimate loading zone that's 12 feet by 30 feet, which really is suitable for this type of use, residential use where all you're going to have is, you know, a garbage truck coming once a week and a Amazon and other delivery vehicles. And we've got a good space for them that's not going to affect anybody, plus two extra spaces. And we pulled everything further from the water course. Some of our members want to call it a drainage ditch, but we're being more respectful here. It is occasionally dry, but it has flooded in the past.
This is a piece of, I'm sorry, well, this is a piece of Goodwives River that ended big flood when stoppage flood a year ago. This is connected to it. So if I read this correctly, you're going to clean up that water course bed or whatever is there?
Yeah, the plan is with the neighbor's permission to do improvements, which would eliminate invasive species, get out silt and built-up junk, and basically make it flow better.
We've been trying to get
In fact, according to the town maps, this is actually not part of the Goodwives River, but in point of fact, during a significant storm event, it flows past the culvert under I-95, which is where it's supposed to go. And maybe that needs to be unblocked and down to Goodwives Shopping Center.
Old Kings Highway North, right, yeah.
So looking at the plans, let's go to the next. So we're going to talk about existing additions. We have photos of the subject and adjacent properties. Our objective, which we already described, we have elevations of the architectural plans. We're showing you what the end result would be, so you see what you're getting. It's not in site plan, it's in elevations. Proposed regulation changes the actual text of the regulation. And then zones comparisons, because we're asking you to go from 1,000 square feet in a per dwelling unit to 1,250. Why do we think that's appropriate? And it's basically because you've done it in many other zones. And then a zoning chart, we have a table of zoning compliance. You okay, Fred?
I just want to mention that I do think we should break these out into two separate applications with the zone change first and then the site plan and special permit. It is likely that the commission is going to need to keep the site plan and special permit open tonight to allow for a decision to happen at EPC. I don't want the zone change to get caught up in keeping that open if we don't have to. So just from a procedural standpoint, I think
That makes sense.
I think it makes sense to go forward with the zoning amendment now, close that, and then get into the site plan and special permit.
Let's go with it, that's fine. Great. Then we have a zoning chart, which is a table of zoning compliance that indicates the areas where we need to tweak it or where we're looking for findings from you. And that will be part of the summary slide of the site plan application, because we set out in one document basically the types of findings we're looking for you. Assuming
Keep going.
Assuming we can get the, you approve our zone change application. So, and then we point out that the plan of conservation development supports the changes we're asking. There's good language in the plan of conservation development to support this. Well, let's go to the next one. Existing conditions and photos. For those of you who haven't had a chance, let's slip
No, no, you're good. Keep going.
You're good. This is just for these guys in the audience, and we're all on your team anyway.
Okay. So this is 104, this is 108 down here, two buildings. This building is not in great shape. And this building is inhabitable, it could be restored, but it's been empty and derelict for a long time, and it's just better to scrape them and start over. And take the two separate lots, which are served by a common driveway, over a large culvert that was installed back when Old Kings Highway was relocated, I think when the thruway was put in. And
Were you born there?
Just
You started talking, you're a Welsh
I said, yes. Anyway, I was born there. So those, that culvert is huge, and we have certified its structural integrity. The fire marshal has signed off on that. So we're going to propose to keep that going, same entrance. Let's go to the next couple of slides. This is the back of the Trader Joe's parking lot in Chase Bank, and you can see this is our property, it's just to the left here. And this is the back entrance onto Old Kings Highway North. And this is the tennis court facility, which is on our west side, opposite Old Kings Highway North. Let's keep going. There's a small residential house immediately south of us owned by Ms. Wang, Wong, or H, I believe it is. We have an understanding with her about improvements we're going to make to her property and to ours. And we're also talking, she has consented to our cleaning out her water course.
So you're going to clean hers too?
We will definitely clean hers, and we will work on, there's, you'll see a picture of a catch basin that really needs to be cleaned. We'll take care of that too, if that's in front of her property. And this is the Fuji, which I understand may be part of an application in the future, but that's been there, and how it's survived for the last 35 years, I have no idea, but there may be some redevelopment coming on that. So our site is here. This is Ms. Wang's property. This is the tennis courts here. Here's Trader Joe's, and there are parking that comes out on Old Kings Highway North. And this is Fuji with I-95 adjacent.
That's 85 Old Kings Highway next to it?
Right over here, I believe, yes. That's 85 Old Kings Highway.
Yeah, I think the next one.
And the water course basically comes from here through here, and then it's supposed to go under the thruway here, but as Steve recounted, in a big storm event, it gets blocked and then it flows down to Goodwives Shopping Center. So our objective is to raise the existing buildings, build two buildings, each with four two-bedroom apartments, all under 1,250 square feet. They're like 1,230 square feet. We have 18 parking spaces. We're only required to have 16, so we've got some extra, which is really nice. We also have van-accessible handicap spaces under each building. That's required by code. So we have a 12 by 30-foot loading zone. Typically, it's 15 feet, but that's if you've got 18-wheelers coming in. You're never going to get an 18-wheeler in here. So that's a really big loading zone for the type of delivery vehicles we're going to have, which are going to be the garbage truck and a couple of, you know, Amex, whatever, FedEx, et cetera. We are meeting inclusionary zoning. We will either do that by payment of a fee in lieu for the one-point, whatever apartments we need to provide for 14%, or by having one apartment that's affordable and paying the extra percentage as a fee. It's your choice, okay?
Can we try to focus on the zone change?
Yes, that's next.
Thank you.
Well, here's the architectural plans, just what you're going to look at.
Let's skip those for now.
Skip those, okay.
There you go.
Proposal regulations, units up to 1,250, allow development on lots less than six tenths of an acre to have eight two-bedroom apartments with no single-bedroom units. That's a change, because currently 30%, if you have more than two dwelling units, you're supposed to have 30% of the units be one-bedroom. And that's a provision that relates back to the 80s when they first approved condominiums. And the fear was two-bedroom units are going to generate high school or school demand. And that concern clearly has dissipated over time, because planning and zoning has allowed units much larger than that all over the place. And we think it's appropriate to give us a little relief there. We're looking to reduce the rear building setback to 10 feet in lieu of 1,875. 766 allows you to drop the 25-foot setback by 25%, but we need another 8.75. Reduce the rear parking setback from 10 to zero in the appropriate case. We give you a standard, which I worked with Jeremy to craft, so that it would meet your special permit regulations. By the way, all of this is by special permit. This is not blanket, you know, open
Why would you need that if the parking's under the building?
I'm sorry?
Why would you need that if the parking's under the building?
Because, I'll show you. Our loading zone, I consider to be part of the parking space.
Okay.
And our loading zone, under work, needs to intrude into that parking setback. And at the end of the loading zone, we have our dumpsters. And rather than get into it, I just said the dumpsters are part of the loading zone space. And that's why we said zero, okay? The rear landscape area, because we've got the dumpsters and the loading zone extending beyond the building up to the property line, up to a fence on the property line, we want to have a zero increase instead of 10 feet to that rear, that small portion.
That's just in the DB zone, though.
Just in the DB zone, and you have to make certain findings that it has no negative impact on residential uses, and that it improves the functionality of the site plan.
Now, should we add something, Fred, that says if it's chasing to a residential zone? Because you don't want to go to zero for your budding residential zone.
And can we make, like, not just make a blanket statement on that, like, it's zero to be applied at whim? I can appreciate the loading zone section, seeing the site plan, but I wouldn't want to see that, you know, zero landscaping at your discretion.
It's not, and it's
I would hate to do a blanket on that one.
And I absolutely understand, and that's why Jeremy and I worked to give you a standard that you have to find that makes it work well.
So There are certain conditions and findings to make on the commission.
Yeah. So that's where we're going. Let's go to the text. I'm sorry. We believe the changes are appropriate for this site, the loading zone, and consistent with the plan of conservation development. If derelict buildings not suitable for the uses already allowed by the DB zone, it's just not that, you know, this multifamily use is really what needs to be there. And we're keeping it all on the second floor or above, which is what your regs currently require. We have earlier asked to put them on the first floor. We talked about how the Trader Joe's footage, the residence in 1870 tennis court, the water course affects the property. You guys recently approved Seven Cedwick, which was 18 units in the CBD. It's two blocks away from us. It's similar in many ways, but they're actually in a flood zone, we're not. 766, note A, that's the provision talked about, 30% of the units are single bedroom. But that was adopted in the 80s. We think the concerns about that, about school children have dissipated, and that it's appropriate to give a relaxation on that.
In the DB zone?
Yep. And so, let's go. Most other zones allow units larger than 1,000 square feet, which is the cap in the DB zone. Let's go to the next thing. Zone comparisons. This is in your file, it's, you know, this information. Other zones allow large units. You get 3,000 square feet in the Act of Senior Overlay, section 435, and in the CBD Corbin Large Development District, section 738. So give me sections where you've got that. And it's all, you know, there's no maximum size in the SB zone under section 752. So I won't go through all this, but it's in your materials. And I think that gives indication that you're not that concerned about 1,000 square feet. And with units this size, they're clearly going to be two bedrooms. You're not going to have a one-bedroom, it's 1,875 square feet. So let's do for this zone what you've done for other zones.
Hold up one second, Fred. I know in the Rock Heights Overlay, we gave the caro three bedrooms or two three-bedrooms. Is there a cap size on that too? Is it just a number of bedrooms?
I don't believe there is. We can double check.
Because you have it on there, it's 18 square feet. See, what's 15, 15?
1,875, yeah.
Because, no, if you go down lower, it says 15 inch square feet, units in the Rock Heights business zone?
Yeah.
There's that's, there's no way there's three-bedroom when it's 15 inch square feet.
Yeah, I don't know what happened and how you did that, I haven't analyzed that.
He's got three bedrooms.
Okay. Okay, that'll be a tight three-bedroom, 15-inch. Anyway, our zoning chart. This is the, this is the table of zoning compliance that was submitted with your application. And I want to just take it as the required, the existing, and the proposed. And basically, I want to point out that we're looking for relief. You can give relief through the enclosures, findings under the inclusionary zoning for a lot of what we're asking for, including the building height. When you go to 32.5, we're only at 31.5. You can do that under inclusionary zoning. You can do it for three stories under inclusionary zoning. So we're going to ask you to make those findings. But the rear yard setback, you can only go to 1,875, and we need 10.9. So we asked for 10, because we weren't sure where we'd wind up. But that's a zoning amendment. And then we also need a zoning amendment for the 1,250-square-foot unit size. And I want to point out that maximum building coverage, you're allowed under the inclusionary zoning to give us 37.5 or 33 point, no, 32.62. So we're going to ask for you to make the findings under inclusionary zoning to permit that somewhat larger building coverage.
Steve, to answer your question regarding the MB zone and the Vacara project, the MB zone, the commission may, the maximum is 1,200 square feet. However, the commission may increase that maximum to 1,500 square feet. If they can make the required special permit findings in section 1,005 of the Darian zoning regulations, dwelling unit shall have no more than two bedrooms.
How do we give my three bedroom? That's okay. I know, I know, I mean, that's a five. So how we got there, I don't know, but
Yeah.
Okay.
Can dig a little bit deeper on that if we need to.
So that's, that's where we are. I do note that our maximum developed site coverage, we're at 49.52. We're adding about 200 square feet from existing to get to our proposed, which is just over 50%. And under the old proposal, we were close to 65% developed site coverage.
You're allowed to go up to E.
We're up to go to A, we can go to A, and we're at 50.1, 0.5. Next, Exhibit A. So this, the text changes and consistent with the plan of conservation development. We've got seven, three sections that we're changing, and let's just go right to those, okay? This one, 766. This is part of the DB zone. It's the area and bulk requirements. And there was a typo in the table of zoning compliance, seven, minimum rear yard should be C, note D. It was note C when I looked. I think Fred already made the change on that, because I think it was a typo and he felt comfortable doing that. Is that right?
We haven't made the change yet, but it's forthcoming.
It's something that should be done.
Thank you for finding it, Mr. Caffey.
Okay, so maximum floor area for all dwelling units, instead of 1,000 square feet, 1,250. D, this changed, and it changed because there, the, in fact, as specified above, except as follows. This text, what happened is it was one paragraph, and then this text that is in red, one red, really should be black, because that's already the text that exists. But what I did is I broke it into three sections. So as specified above, except as follows. This is already existing language. Where a rear yard abuts a residential zone, the rear yard requirement shall be at least equal to the rear yard requirement of the adjoining residential zone. That's standard practice. That's not affected, it doesn't affect us, we're not abutting a residential zone, we're all in the DB zone. Where the lot is a corner lot and its rear yard is not adjacent to land in any of the zone, the rear yard requirement shall equal the side yard requirement. That was part of the text, too. Three is the change.
Timeout one second. So you say adjacent to not any other zone, so that encompasses the residential zone, right?
Right. So where a building complies with the inclusionary zoning, so you've got to comply with inclusionary zoning. The commission may reduce the rear yard setback to 10 feet, provided the commission finds such reduction improves the functionality of the site development plan with no adverse impact on any nearby residential use. So you've got to make that finding. Improve functionality of the site plan and no adverse impact on any adjacent residential use. So that was language that Jeremy and I worked out as something that gives you a standard on which to hang your hat. And so, Amy, to address your concern, this is not open season. It's something that has specific teeth to it, that you can, you can say, I don't believe that works. But I think it does work in this case, for us, anyway. And then E, this is the note I've been talking about. If there's more than eight dwelling units, then at least 30% of the total number of dwelling units shall be one-bedroom. I changed two to eight. And the reason I did that is we have eight units on a six-tenth of an acre lot, and we want to have them all two-bedroom. And this is the way we get there. And then we say, if you're doing eight dwelling units on a lot, on any site of 20,000 square feet or less, the total number of dwelling units shall not exceed eight dwelling units on a small lot in the DB zone. That's a combined area of 0.6 acres. Or, and 12 dwelling units. We go from seven dwelling units for larger areas to 12. And that was, we just picked that out of the air. That was not something Jeremy and I spent a lot of time on.
Say that one more time, brother, I'm sorry.
So in small lots, you can have eight dwelling units, and they, you can have all two-bedroom if you want. But when you get to larger lots
Which is over a half acre.
Over a half acre, over six tenths. You need to have, 30% of the units have to be one-bedroom, and you can't have more than 12 lots.
And designated business zone.
In the, this is solely in the DB zone. This is DB reg area and bulk requirements. Now, that 12, I mean, I frankly, if we're at seven per half acre, maybe you go to 14, but I leave that to you. Doesn't affect us, so I was fine with Jeremy's suggestion. Can you see it? Steve, do I need to move this?
Yeah, I need to, okay.
Sorry?
Yep, you're good.
Oh, sorry. Screwed up. There we go. Can you see it now?
Yep.
Okay. Amy, can you see?
I'm fine, I'm fine, yeah.
So that's the text of 766 and the changes, and it's really here and here, and these two things up here, okay?
Your lot, how many square feet you think your lot is?
It's just under
I mean, I got it
Just shy of 20,000, it's 19,690.
Right, that's how it is.
19,695, I think.
I have 19,166.
Whatever. It's, it's just under 20.
So at the end of the day, you're about 18, you're 18 units an acre.
Yeah, well, we're proposing 12 units on, you know, any larger lot, as the max.
Right, your density on this site, which we're not in site plan right now, is 18 units an acre.
Is it? I don't think so. We're eight, we're 16.
Are we saying eight units in less than 20?
You take eight units divided by 0.44, you give 18 more, something units an acre.
Well, what's our acreage right now? 12.
0.45, no.
0.45. If you double that, that could see the nine, so that, maybe we can get to, yeah.
There you go.
Okay. I think there's some imbalance there with the 12. Frankly, I'd push it up a little bit if I were you, but that's not my balance, okay? Next. Thank you. Parking setbacks, this is where you get to Amy, why we're doing the parking setbacks. And where, this is a new note C. Where a single-family or multifamily residential use abuts a commercial use, the commission may reduce the parking setback to zero if it finds the size and shape of the lot make it impractical to comply, or if such reduction improves the functionality of the site development plan with no adverse impact on nearby residential use. So it's the same sort of standard. Improve functionality of the site development plan with no adverse impact on nearby residential use. And it's not a budding, it's nearby. So you can extend that to the house across the street, if you choose to. And that was a standard that Jeremy and I discussed and thought was appropriate. And in our case, when we get the site plan, you'll see that we really, it makes a, makes a huge difference in our functionality to be able to push into, right next to the tennis court lot, and keep our 30-foot width, length of the loading zone. Next.
Is there, I wonder if there's an additional language that could apply to that, that creates like a not to exceed type of language for us to debate?
Yeah, for you to debate. I mean, I, we're, we're looking at a minor incursion of about 12 feet.
But we're looking at a zone change that would apply
You know, in the middle of a commercial use that's adjacent.
Yeah.
And it's been there for 30 years, actually 45 years or so. So, anyway.
Could you mind just pull up a site plan, so you can show where this one thing affects?
Sure. We're going to slip to.
Because I think I know where it is.
Exactly. I know.
Here's the site.
Yeah, it's right.
So, here's the entrance over the culvert. There's our loading zone. Here's our two outside spaces. And you have the, there's a fence proposed along, six-foot or eight-foot fence along the tennis court property. And we have our two dumpsters in a cage with.
And if you were to say as a perimeter, that's like, less than 5% of the.
Right.
I, I can appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And I can appreciate the site plans, let me take, like, asking for just a little, but the language indicates otherwise. That's all. It's an observation.
And then, the other thing we're doing is we're not proposing a lot of landscaping in here, because our snow storage is here. So when we plow, we're going to be plowing and storing back here. And it's nice, because you can come from the street, phooop, and in. And it's good, I think you said for six, eight inches or more.
Six, eight.
So, and that was a concern.
Who's directly in back there?
This is, oh, this is the tennis court.
That's the tennis, yeah, because the way the land, the way the road loops around.
Yeah, Mrs. Swine is here. Old Kings Highway is here with Fuji, and then Trader Joe's.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Do you have an aerial of that right now?
Yeah.
I, I know. I, I'm good. I just lost my bearings for a minute.
Yeah, there's a, so here's us. This is Old Kings Highway. You can see it's huge. And we're looking at their parking lot. I mean, where we're going to be putting our landscape, our loading zone is right against their parking lot.
Yep.
And it just seemed logical to push there with your permission.
Yep.
Under a standard that we think is adequately tough. And if you want to toughen it, feel free, just give us an approval, please.
Where's, where's the entrance to the Old Kings Highway tennis? Up by the N, right?
This is, it's on, on this side here.
No, keep going. I think it's where the N is on, where it says Old Kings Highway North.
Oh, the entrance, the Old Kings Highway North is, I think, in there, yes. And they, they're.
There's two of them. There's an entry and exit, yeah.
I think there might be another one right around.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks. All right, so, zoning chart, back to, I think we're, parking setbacks. So here's the parking setbacks, again. Language already in black is there, so we pulled it out to do ABC in section 906, parking setbacks, which says, "For all uses except single-family residents, the landscape area shall be provided along the perimeter of all parking areas." And where the commission shall determine, A, that the lot size and shape or the existing topography or structures make it impractical to comply, they can modify it.
This is your new language.
This is, that's existing language.
A is existing.
A is existing. You already have that. So, and you've done this in numerous occasions, where you say, hey, this just doesn't make sense. We don't need it. But I thought we needed to go further, because modify doesn't mean eliminate. And so, the modification improves functionality of the site development plan with no adverse impact on any nearby residential use. Same standard we have in the other language. So if you make a change to that standard in the other language, you ought to make it in here, if you're going to try and tighten it up. But here, I think that's another, you know, it's the same standard. You have to make the same finding. Or, and then I added for the loading zone, to avoid any ambiguity about landscape area, I wanted to say that the loading zone is screened by a minimum six-foot fence, and there is no adverse impact on any neighboring residential use. So, those standards are there. And then, the commission may approve modification and elimination of this standard, provided the intent, and I specified the intent, to protect abutting residential use is satisfied. And if you want to change abutting to nearby, have at it, you know. That's, that wouldn't be a problem for us. But that was the language that Jeremy and I discussed, so.
And what about if we change minimum six-foot fence to bushes?
Well, bushes won't work for us, because we need.
I know, I understand. I get it. But if someone wants to put bushes instead of fence?
Oh, more bushes? Or, well, you're not going to be at zero with that, but that's fine.
I could put, I could put green giants.
Or, or, you know, you could. Or you could put appropriate screening, whatever, satisfactory to the commission. If you want to change that, add that in, that would be fine.
Mr. Pop would love to put a green giant.
I also, I also like the change to a budding.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. From a budding to nearby.
Yeah, because you could imagine, like, let's just say the Highland Street that, you know, Royal, the, oh my God, I'm drawing a blank. There's a neighborhood that might not be a budding, but it's like, the topography could change, and you could, you know, be three houses up and still see this eyesore.
A budding is really specific. Nearby gives you broader discretion.
Yep.
And I think you want more discretion here, and that's.
So you like it what it says there now?
I'm happy to have it say nearby. Nearby.
Nearby.
It says nearby, right?
No, it says a budding.
The last one says a budding.
The last one says nearby. Very consistent, here.
Yeah. I think nearby is better.
Protect abutting residential use. Nearby is more vague, which is somewhere around that.
Wilder, you did submit an amendment late today that was uploaded to the application that I think included some of these changes that you're talking about.
Well, I submitted last week an amendment to, an amendment to exhibit A, this exhibit that we've been talking about, that was uploaded. But it, I think, tracks this language. And so, you should make note that in section 906, you want to have nearby.
Nearby residential use, right.
That's what I think you want to do.
Which is what it says, not a budding.
Oh, okay. Well, we have a budding in ours presentation.
This says, this is, this is from May 27th, May 21st. It says a budding. In the last sentence, right?
I think there's two different places, and one says nearby, and one says a budding.
So I think what you want to do is change a budding wherever it appears to nearby, and that'll solve the problem. Okay. Next.
Can you hold on one second? Does anybody have any questions on this? Wilder's got to do a whole bunch of stuff.
I think George brought up a good point about the definition of nearby, how it can be.
Yeah, nearby being more vague, and as I said, it's problematic for enforcement.
Okay, my concern is.
We're enforcing it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if they're, it should be litigation of the parties or whatever, of course. I know it's a long way down.
I just want the ability for somebody that's in a nearby, that feels their sight lines or views are adversely impacts their residential values, to have the ability to speak even though they're not adjacent.
See, you know, there's, there's an issue in giving someone like that standing.
Well, we give people that are 100 feet.
We give people that wonder three blocks away.
Yeah, well.
We give people that are, and maybe it's consistent with our 100-foot abuddings.
In a situation like that. So, look, we're fine with it. Because we just don't see anybody who's going to.
And in this case, I don't either.
It's just not going to happen. But I understand your concern, Amy, down the line. So, let's go to the next one.
So, anybody else, hold on. Anybody else want to, George, Jane, I'm good?
So far, so good.
Thank you. All right. The plan of conservation development supports this. You see this in the development strategies for managing residential development. Maintain the residential character of the town. Continue to diversify Darien's housing portfolio. That's a big one. It's one of the objectives. This diversifies the Darien housing portfolio. We should have a range of housing types to meet the broad array of housing needs. And continue to maintain the characteristics of residential community, which is primarily comprised of lower-density, single-family neighborhoods. We're not affecting that at all. We're in a DB zone, which is essentially business zone. Within this overall framework, provide a range of housing types and densities to meet the broad array of housing needs. Next. Again, diversifying Darien's housing portfolio. There's information about age-related conditions and trends. Darren may be losing older residents due to ages 55 and over, because they can't find housing that's suitable to live in.
So they moved to the north, they moved to East Newark.
Exactly, or West Newark.
Or West Newark.
Yeah, which is what I did. But this, this is, you know, you want to keep people who have lived here for a long time and no longer need school services in town, if possible. You're doing that in big-time ways in downtown. This is on the periphery of downtown in something that gives another type of housing in an appropriate area. The planning and zoning generally reviews variety of housing options as enhancement to Darien. We should continue to encourage a broad range of housing in appropriate locations. Darien can, at the same time, gradually diversify its housing portfolio to meet a broader range of housing needs and present, and needs of present and future residents. So, ways to address the housing needs of aged population. Review and, this is action steps. PNC, review zoning provisions and locations for multifamily housing to ensure they are appropriate for the future. This fits right within that. It's in your bailiwick for that. And evaluate and consider eliminating size restrictions on multifamily units, and rely instead on building size and bulk standards. Well, you're not relying on building size and bulk standards here, but you are giving us a little flexibility in what we're doing here, from 1,000 square feet to 1,250. That's in your bailiwick. Next. We're done.
So, a question occurs, if I may. I, I heard you saying, Wilder, that this is not likely to attract school-aged children. I think it was your.
Well, I, I don't know that for a fact. I.
That's my question. Who's going to be in the second bedroom?
I, I think a lot of elderly people will want two-bedroom units. I just think that's a given. This is not that close to, it's close to downtown, but we don't have sidewalks all the way to downtown yet. So, I mean, they got to go through the Trader Joe's parking lot to get the sidewalk that gets to downtown. That's doable for active elderly. The, you know, are you going to want to raise your kids in this place where there's no amenities? I mean, we barely got lawn for a dog to go do its business. There's, these are tight. So, it's possible, but I, I don't think it's going to be, certainly not the target population we'll be looking for here.
Do you know about divorced parents?
Yep, and divorced parents may find this is a good stopover for a while.
At this point, you're thinking your site plan's going to be rental?
I'm sorry?
At this point, you're thinking that your application's going to be rental?
Yeah, I think that's what Sean's planning on doing, but he hasn't really. We really have to get the approvals, and then frankly, we're going to have to take a deep breath and look at the economics of this project, because as, we've gone from 12 units to eight units. And eight units are, just may not work. But we think it's appropriate, and Sean wants to get these approvals.
Have you thought about 55 and over on the site plan?
We thought about it, but we frankly want to open the market. Pemberton's experience is cautionary for us.
That's 62 and over.
No, and so, that actually.
It's a big difference.
That is a huge difference.
It is a huge difference.
That is a huge difference.
As a Realtor, I can tell you that's a huge difference.
Yeah, but I, you know, we just didn't want to do that.
I don't think Mr. Shae builds to the quality of Pemberton.
Yeah.
Could I just take my question just one more step? Just for the sake of argument. Why should we prohibit one-bedroom units?
We're not.
He's not asking to.
I'm not asking a prohibition. I'm saying up to.
Yeah, there'll be no single bedrooms. You can have up to eight two-bedroom units with no single bedroom unit.
Well, you know what? If you want to say, let's go back to that language.
I thought you were asking not to have to meet the minimum standard of 30%.
Yeah.
With this one, or?
Eight dwellings, then at least 30% of the total number shall be one-bedroom. The total number of dwellings shall not exceed eight dwellings on any site of 20,000 square feet. So, we could have eight single-family dwelling units on a, on a small lot. And we don't, we're not prohibited from having one-bedrooms by this language.
I just want to read this. I'm just reading the notice here. To allow developments on smaller lots, less than 20,000 square feet within the DB zone, to have up to eight two-bedroom units with no single bedroom.
So the legal notice does not track the language of what we're doing. And what we did is we applied the 30% single fam, single dwelling units to larger lots only. It doesn't prohibit smaller lots from having one bedrooms. But the economics are such that you're pretty much going to get two bedrooms with these.
You're basically saying, if there's at least eight, then 30% have to be one. If there's less than eight, they could be any type of bedroom.
If more than eight.
Eight or less.
If eight or more, you must have 30% one-bedroom.
More than eight, not anymore.
Yes, more than. It's not eight or more. It's, if more than eight dwelling lots, then 30% shall not, shall be one-bedroom, okay?
You're just moving the line.
We're moving, yeah.
Which is what Vacara did.
He's moving the line.
Yeah.
Vacara did that, where Danny's Bicycle Shop is, and those are two four-bedroom buildings. They're two four-unit buildings, which is effectively eight. It's operated as one, and they're all two-bedroom.
So, that, those are our zone change. Are there any other questions that just want to make sure we get the record clear?
Amy, you good, Jamie? Amy, you okay?
I'm still thinking.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We just have to go to the general public.
I, as part of, either it's the here or later, I would like to talk about where this else could apply, buffering residential neighborhoods in the DB zone. My biggest concerns are eliminating or reducing the parking standard and the landscaping standard together. I get why you're asking for that for this site plan, and I think it makes sense for this site plan. But I'm thinking about five years from now, when none of us are here and somebody else is trying to make those rules apply to a future project. I just want to understand the scope of what's at risk.
I, I think you've got a lot of discretion, because you made findings. It's an adverse.
I, I, I understand that we do have a discretion, but at the same time, what you might lose is the rationale as to why we did it. And so, that's all. I just want to understand a broader view.
Are there other lots in the DB zone that this could apply to? So typically, when we see changes to a setback, we'll get a list of saying, this could also apply towards this lot, this lot.
I haven't analyzed that to see where else it could apply.
That's, that's really my next question.
We could do that during.
And we can do that. That's.
Yeah, that's something you can do. There's, I would be more concerned across the street, on the post road, where you have, you know, business uses abutting residential uses on the other side of the post road. I think on.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What's, do you know what, Old Kings, Old Kings Highway Tennis Zone?
It's DB.
That's DB as well, yes.
Because it says, your wording right there behind you says, not adjacent to, to land in any other zone, which covers the residential. Number two.
Well, that's for.
It's for corners.
Right.
It doesn't have that language in our proposal. If you want to take that language and drop it into three.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
That might be an alternative to what Jamie's concerned.
Conceptually, Old Kings Highway is, it's an office district zone. No one's ever building office building in that park, yeah. It's never going to happen. And there's no one's going to put a business there. It's never going to happen.
You have, you have condos.
Right.
You have two condominium developments in the DB zone. And then you've got, you've got apartments on the second floor above various commercial uses.
85 Old Kings Highway is probably one of the last office buildings to rent in town. That's a big piece of dirt that overlooks 95.
It's up for rent, too?
It's, it's available for rent. Their biggest tenant moved out. We went to 330 and 331, which is Fletcher Black Building. So that's, the only other thing that could possibly go there would be some kind of like jungle gym, you know, recreational place.
Is there any reason to think about the?
Is there any reason to think about the, um, no adverse impact on other than residential uses?
No, it's in there.
Well, you know, that's covered by special permit regulations. You have broad discretion, you know, adverse impact on neighbors is part of the section one thousand five special.
For residential also, that's.
That's in, these are in addition to your normal special permit regulation controls. So I, you've got belts and suspenders here.
Did you, did you talk with the tennis club about putting a bunch of garbage cans on the other side of their fence?
No, we did not. But we did talk to them about them acquiring this for an expansion of their parking lot.
But they've, they've been notified, they know.
Yeah, they said they were noticed, right?
We did send them notice and we heard nothing. Yeah.
I'd say, I mean, if we're talking about adverse impacts, right, waiving these to essentially put the garbage right on the property line, they're the neighbors, they're the ones who are gonna be potentially impacted by this, so they're.
And they got a copy of this text chain.
That apartment is closer to the garbage dumpster and that apartment's closer to the garbage, than the Old Kings Highway playing tennis on.
But people park right there.
Yeah, the, yeah, the floor.
All of a sudden you got rodents and you got garbage.
That's right next to my apartment.
There's a fence back there. There will be, potentially, but no screening.
Okay, let me go, you ready to add at this point?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to note that the application was referred out to West Cog and West Cog submitted comments for the record dated May twentieth in which they note, thank you for submitting the attached referral to West Cog for review. The opinion of regional staff is the proposed amendments are primarily of local interest with minimal intermunicipal impact. Staff provides no comment. That was the only referral, the application, and then of course, for the commission to pass this proposed zoning amendment, you must find that it, of course, is consistent with the twenty sixteen town plan of conservation and development.
Yeah, thank you.
And the E P C did, uh, what's, no, the next regulation.
Yeah, E P C's got to.
Oh, the next.
This, this site plan for public knowledge, it's, is, has got to E P C a bunch of times. And the last application they put in for the site plan got withdrawn.
Yeah, when we get into the site plan and special permit, we can cover the other boards and commissions that reviewed this.
Let me go, did anybody in the general public want to speak to this application? Seeing none, they were good there. You're good?
I'm good.
Everybody here good? Okay, can you take a motion to close the hearing? Adam makes the motion for a second. Jamie makes a second. Okay, here's vote. All right, you're good, right?
I'm good.
You presented everything you need to present.
I, I'm, I'm good.
Fantastic, all right. That's, you don't have to leave, you can stay right there. So about the next application, site plan application number one oh five D's in Dog, special permit application number two fifty three B's Boy, landfilling and regating application number five seventy-four A, also known as P L twenty-five dash forty-nine, Old Kings Highway North, one oh four LLC, Old Kings Highway North, one oh eight LLC at one oh four and one oh eight Old Kings Highway North. Propose to raise the two existing vacant residential slash office buildings on the subject property, merge the two lots and redevelop the property as a multi-headed residential and perform related site activities including the regaining of the property, construction of parking, installation of landscaping, lighting, stormwater management. The applicant proposed to construct two three-story multifamily apartment buildings, each with four, two bedroom units, two bedroom dwelling units for a total of eight dwelling units, including one deed restricted affordable unit. The subject properties located on the west side of Old Kings Highway North approximately point two six miles south northeast within a circular Brookside Road, one oh four Old Kings Highway North is shown on assessment map number thirty-five as lot number seventeen. It's also zero point two one acres, supervised acres. And one oh five, one oh eight Old Kings Highway North is shown on the assessment map number thirty-five as lot eighteen. That is zero point two three acres. Both properties are located in the design business D B, D B zone. Thank you. Fred, what do we got?
Yeah, Steve, as you noted, the application is to merge the lots, merge the two lots into one single lot and develop two three-story apartment buildings with four two-bedroom unit apartments in each of those buildings with eighteen parking spaces underneath the buildings. The application was submitted in conformance with section one thousand, one thousand twenty and eight fifty of the Darien zoning regulations under our site plan, special permit and landfilling and regating regulations. The commission as part of this application hired two peer reviewers to review the engineering aspects of the proposal. Joe Canis of Time Bond was hired to review the, the, the site drainage and engineering aspects of the proposal. And then Greg Del Rio of Hardesty and Hanover was hired to look at the traffic and parking aspects of the proposal. Steve Coppola from Hardesty and Hanover is here this evening in Greg's absence and Joe Canis is here as well to present his findings to the commission. However, Joe submitted comments for the record dated March twenty-fourth with final comments submitted on the application data dated April twenty-fourth endorsing the project. The application was also referred out to the fire marshal's office. Bob Bush submitted comments for the data, comments for the application dated May fifth. The applicant responded to the fire marshal's comments today in an email which has been uploaded to the record. The application was also referred out to the traffic authority and police department. The chief of police, Chief Marin, submitted comments for the record dated today, May twenty-seventh, noting no additional comments from what was submitted by Hardesty and Hanover. The application was also referred out to the health department. The director of health also submitted comments for the record dated today, May twenty-seventh, which was also uploaded to the application. Mindy Shkreli, the director, had a few very minor comments related to the demolition of the building and ongoing trash maintenance.
Who was that? That was the health department?
That was the health department, yes. So the application also went before the architectural review board. The A R B issued, issued a favorable report on the application, May twentieth. And as we previously noted, the application is currently before the environmental protection commission. We expect a decision by the E P C sometime in June.
Which is three days away.
Which is three days away, right. E P C next meets on June fourth, so likely action will be taken on that date.
Seven days.
And then Hardesty and Hanover submitted comments for the record dated April twenty-first with the applicant's traffic consultant, Kim Lee Horn, submitting comments for the record dated April twenty-fifth. And Steve Coppola's gonna give us some more information on the status of that this evening. But Wilder's gonna present the details of the site plan.
Actually, I'm not going to do that. I'm gonna turn it over to Kurt, who's the real expert on this. And, but basically, we have proposed, as, as Fred indicated, we've scaled back from eighteen units and sixty-five percent site coverage to eight units, two separate buildings, all apartments on the second floor with housing below. We have two extra parking spaces beyond what zoning requires. We have a legitimate loading zone. We have a good snow storage area and we're reutilizing the existing culvert over the water, oh, the waterway so that, and that's been certified as being structurally sound. That was accepted by the fire marshal. And the fire marshal had a bunch of comments and I responded in an email this afternoon basically saying, we'll do everything you can, we can that you've requested, including install a hydrant at a location where the fire marshal wants us to do, but we can't give him a forty-seven foot turning radius. So emergency vehicles are gonna have to drive in and back out or back in and drive out. There's just no way we can give him that sort of turning radius.
Building's fully sprinkled?
Fully sprinkled. It's got stand pipes, it's got everything that he wants, so we've got bells and whistles up thinking yam on this. So I'm gonna turn the details over to Kurt and he'll give you the, the story.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Take your name for the record, please.
Yep. Kurt Lowenstein for the record, professional engineer with Land Tech. We handle the site civil aspects of the project here. I mean, layout, I don't wanna go too into detail without reiterating too much here.
Why don't you actually go into a little bit of detail, so, because this is a new application, the other stuff with the zoning, so you can just point out what you wanna point out to.
Yep, no problem.
Every, every instance.
Existing access off of Old Kings Highway North, we're keeping that access, curb cut stays the same. As Wilder mentioned, there is a existing culvert there that we will be still using.
Where exactly is the culvert? Could you point to it?
So, yep. So this is the limits of the culvert here.
Yep, okay.
So the, the stone walls or the.
And that's where this test was performed with the truck being parked on it for?
That's correct.
Twenty-four, okay.
Yep. So we will be accessing off of same access over this culvert now, you know, just to keep the record clean each way. Through our process with the E P C, there's been agreements that we will clean that culvert out to improve the flow through there along with various other improvements within, from the environmental standpoint. So once we get over the culvert, straight shotting with, with a two-way drive access, we'll use for the sake of argument Plan North, so you have building A to the west, building B to the east. Each will have parking underneath of it, residential will be above, handicap provided on both sides. Again, this will be an ADA van space, so an eight and eight setup. There will be two exterior spaces that will be used for things like gas, that maybe if there's somebody like a, you know, a door dash delivery that's just a car, they could park there if that's about what's needed. And we also have the loading space in the rear. It does meet the twelve by thirty requirement and then your dumpsters will be to the end. So from a trash pickup perspective, trash truck backs down, picks up the garbage and then drives out. One of the concerns through E P C was what do you do with the snow? And this is greatly limited by putting all the parking underneath of the building, but again, we have shown provisions for that, that will be to the rear just off the end of the parking. So these two spaces in a snow condition, either if these are vacant, snow can be pushed off there. If they are occupied, there still is opportunity to push that snow around the corner.
Was it E P C concerned?
They were worried about the snow stop piling adjacent to the water course and if that snow, you know, may pick up contaminants and what have you, and that could get into the water course. So we have provided provisions for that. This area, you're looking at roughly like a six inch storm, like snowfall that could fit there and then obviously there's more provision that they could keep pushing if need be.
You could also take it off-site, too.
Certainly could do that, but we wanted to kinda demonstrate, let's assume that they're not taking off-site, this is where we, where we can make it happen. Total parking spaces, we do have eighteen, again, two of which are handicap accessible.
So it's eight under, eight under each building for sixteen plus two exterior of them?
That's correct. From a stormwater perspective, existing, as you know, there were two buildings on site now, accessed over that culvert. So impervious area, it's about a wash. I think we're slightly increasing maybe two hundred square feet, but as the requirements are in town, as you all probably know, we need to analyze this based on zero development, so the fresh metal approach. So although we're kinda net zero on the impervious, we're, our system is sized as if this was a completely vacant site.
And there's no system there today, there's no system there at all today.
That is correct. There's no stormwater management on site other than that existing water course that is transporting water during storm events. So roof, roof runoff for both buildings as well as the exterior parking areas will be routed through a hydrodynamic separator, which will provide a level of treatment and then it'll be discharged into the underground infiltration system. So it'll be a concrete gallery system, it is H twenty loaded, so cars driving over it, no concern of it being compromised. And as well, the, each of the catch basins will be deep sump catch basin. So we have a pretty robust treatment train here from the surface parking that will, or the surface driveway that will get into the catch basins, that'll have an opportunity to settle out some of those salads. It then will go for another level of treatment through the hydrodynamic separator, again, pulling the shards and hydrocarbons out of there and then eventually, this is an infiltration system, so it will recharge stormwater back into the ground. Ultimately, any stormwater runoff that does overflow from our drainage system will overflow via a level spreader located to the Plan West of the, of our culvert access. This is the downstream end of things as far as the flow, so flow is starting up in the upper corner here and then flows around. So we are on the downstream end of the culvert, so any discharge is not impounding any issue that could be happening with the culvert. We think that provides just another level of safety here. Again, I know we're gonna hear from Joe on the review side. We have had some comments back and forth and the final letter that we've gotten is sat, he's, is satisfactory for no more comments from his end. Utilities, right now, we are, we're proposing all new utilities, they will be underground. This will require some trenching through the water course, so there will be some temporary disturbances in there. We went through many rounds with E P C specifically to this. The existing culvert is going to remain, so we can't pull that up and run things underneath of that. So new sewer will be to the south, Plan West of the existing culvert, so that's here. Once we get across the water course, it'll branch to the two buildings. Electric and water will be handled on the Plan East of the culvert, that's these utilities that are crossing here. And then during construction of these utilities, these trenching, and this is just from a timeline perspective, we're looking at, you know, probably a week at most, kinda three to five days that they can get the trenches open, get the utilities in and backfilled. So we're not talking about many months of construction here. That was one of the concerns of, you know, if you got caught in a storm, but I think it's such a short period of time with a good construction crew, it's very simple to keep an eye on the weather and make sure that we're not doing this work, you know, where we see a storm coming up.
So your, your, each building's had its own sewer connection?
There'll be one single sewer connection coming in and then that will branch to the each building.
Okay, got it. That's where it says propose sanitary sewer lateral?
Yes. So that, that'll be here.
Yep.
So during the construction, the trenching itself, there will be sandbag coffer dams put up along with additional double O's of silt fence and as well as stone check dams. This will provide extra levels of filtration and protection for the trench itself. The discharge from the utility trenching itself will be pumped to a silk filtration bag and that'll ensure that, that, you know, kinda muddy water that's gonna come out of the trench, before it makes its way downstream back into the water course, it'll flow overland, it's at least being filtered out and it will be, you know, deemed clean essentially at that point. We're not pushing muddy, filthy water downstream. Construction access, you know, there's only one access to the site, so that's where the construction entrance will be. It'll be your standard construction entrance detail, stone, you know, keeping the mud from tracking into the, into the street. Catch basins will be fitted with temporary silt sacks in them during construction, those will get pulled out and the catch basins will be cleaned out themselves prior to the turnover of the property, but that prevents during construction that we don't get any siltation into the, into the hydrodynamic separator or the, the gallery system itself. Silk, kinda standard silt fence, double O silt fence around the water course, the perimeter of, the remaining perimeter will be your standard silt fencing. The perimeter of, the remaining perimeter will be your standard silt fencing. And just some standard details here. Other than that, before I turn over to Matt, who's going to talk about all the landscaping, I'd love to answer any questions you may have on the civil side.
Just talk a little bit about the cleaning out of the water course area. And what you're planning to do, is that you or is that Matt?
Uh, might be better served for Matt, but it kind of just a ballpark. You know, there's debris, I think there may be, may have been a photo floating around that there was a tire in there, it may still be there. We're going to pull all that garbage out of there, get rid of the invasives. And I believe we're also cleaning out the, on the neighbor's property, the existing culvert that it seems to be kind of the source of any kind of flooding issues that have happened on this property, is that that's been not maintained, severely plugged up. So we'll also be doing that.
So that's the owner of the house downstream?
Yes.
Did you get it from Equity One, right?
Uh, from the... Yeah, let me pull up the aerial. Might be easier to see on the aerial here.
Good. The woman next to her at a hundred Old Kings Highway.
So we're getting it from, from this side, right in here. So I guess this would be the backside of, this is Trader Joe's.
Yep.
So it'd be coming from the backside of Trader Joe's. Then it comes around. This is our culvert crossing here. And then this is the neighbor where the, where the secondary culvert, we'll call it, is. It's a smaller culvert than ours, but it is severely clogged up.
You're cleaning that out, too?
That'll be part of our, yes, our proposal here, is to do that.
Okay. Is that someplace in the record? Because that's, you gotta make sure it happens.
I'm not sure it is in the record. It's a good question, Wilder. As far as the cleaning out of the culvert that we've committed to doing on our property.
Oh, yeah, we've committed to doing it, the culvert on our property. We've also committed to cleaning out the portion of the water course in front of Mrs. Wine's property.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
And that's in the record, it's in the application. We, and we'll also look to see if we can get permission from Trader Joe's to clean out theirs. But we haven't reached out to them yet and so on. But that was a concern, and we're happy to make improvements with neighbors' consent. We already have consent, which is in the file from Mrs. Wine, to allow us to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Any questions for Chris?
I'm not sure whether it's for Chris or traffic, but will a trash removal truck be able to do anything other than back out of that piece of land? Will there be sufficient asphalt?
They'll need to back into, you're asking, couldn't, when we're on, like, if a truck is here, can it turn around? They'll need to back into the site.
They would need to back in.
They would need to back into the site.
Or go in forwards when they have the forks.
Oh, yeah, exactly. If it's, if it's one of those types of trucks, then certainly they can drive in. And then they would back out of the site in that case. But there's not going to be a three-sixty turn that effectively would happen on the site.
That's the same thing with the fire truck, the fire marshal.
It's correct.
And they already signed off on it, the fire marshal?
Well, the fire marshal has lights and sirens and things. I don't worry about them backing up, I just...
Where those trucks go?
Yeah, I think it's a head height would be a concern here.
I'm just worried about the traffic coming along Elkins North.
Is there clearance to allow a truck to back under the entrance to the parking garages under the building?
No.
I'd have to double-check, but I don't believe so.
There is asphalt between the building and the fence, I guess. That's all asphalt? Well, we'll hear about the, but yes, apparently. So a truck, in theory, could...
Here, you're talking about?
Yeah, and to the left.
This is not, this is... So the perimeter of the parking is here, and then ninety degrees.
And off to the right? That's also not...
This is straight here.
And no asphalt to the right?
No. It's very narrow there from like the size of a truck. You wouldn't be able to get your turn.
How many feet is it, is the whole depth, what are we talking about? Ten yards, twenty yards, it's like a half football field, from front to back?
The length from here to here?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, I can get you that.
It's ten-nine. Is the closest the building comes to the...
It looks like it's about a hundred and five feet. From, from nose to tail here.
So it's thirty yards?
Yes, roughly, yeah.
Let me throw a football at it for it.
Okay.
I can, oh, okay. Joe Montana can throw a football at it.
The parking spaces are open. There's no garage doors, right?
Correct. So the building, other, the entryways are open, there's no garage doors, but the building itself, that perimeter, that will have like a facade on it, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for...
Was there any thought on putting those dumpsters somewhere else? Did you look at anywhere else? I, I don't see an obvious...
We looked at a lot of different locations than that. It just made the most sense. I mean, you can't put it in front of the entrances in here, and then you've got to have it accessible to a truck. And that sort of limits you to the entrance corridor, which is here. And in order to get a thirty-foot loading zone, we have the entrances here to get into the garage. And then you start your thirty feet from here, which kicks us into here. And it just, it laid out, we were actually very happy with this layout, once it got done.
So the residents have to go outside to put their garbage and recycling in there?
Just, again, you...
On the side, they have them in the garage, and then when somebody wheels them out to the curb every morning?
It's never going to happen.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like, my parents placed that in Florida. I'd love throwing it into the dumpster. Because that's where people hang out, there's silence, it's probably at the gazebo on Thursday night. It's like, I'm there. That's the best part of the whole thing, going to the dumpster. You know, you do some plumbing. You do. It's, to be honest with you, it's similar to Burco. Burco, it's the same thing, you pull in, grab the thing, and you're back out.
It makes it simple. I mean, ideally, of course, we'd love that, a full turnaround. But from a truck standpoint, having a straight shot is, they can handle that all day.
Yeah, it happens all the time. The only issue that you would have is, and it's going to be your own problem, because it's your own tenants, is that if that thing goes beep, 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 backing out, you wake it up, Mr. Jones in Department 206, and he's going to be pissed.
Fair point.
But he'll get over it.
Are you anticipating trash once a week, recycling once a week, or more frequently?
I would think so, once a week.
There's not that many. More than once a week?
I would think once a week.
Yeah, it's only eight departments.
And if we have to do it twice a week, we'll do it twice a week.
Our one-house goes up garbage again.
You've got four kids. These guys are a bunch of snowbirds. Maybe Florida has to hear. Do you want to go to Joe Canis while you're standing here, since we're going over that?
We could do that.
Let's flip to Joe Canis before he opens up, came to worms with Matt Pop. Uh-oh. The last thing I got from you, Joe, is, the last thing I got from you is March 24th. Run it up the next thing.
Okay. Yeah, for the record, Joseph Canis, Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of Connecticut, Principal Engineer with Ty &amp; Bond. Retained by the Commission to Review the Stormwater Management aspects of the application. I issued two memos on this project, on this current, on this application. The first was dated March 24th, is what you have. And then there was a second that was issued on April 24th. And this was principally as part of the EPC review process. And, you know, essentially, what I said in my April 24th memo is that the proposed stormwater management system is compliant with the Towns Zone Regulations. We found that it's a vast improvement over what's there now. Obviously, as you said, right, which is nothing. So there is some form of stormwater management that's compliant, and it's also designed to the fresh meadow approach. So really, you're going to actually see, you know, at the end of the day, an actual reduction of peak runoff from the site, which will be beneficial. The stormwater quality treatment requirements are met. So we, so we did issue this memo that endorsed it. And as you know, you know, this application has been, you know, in some, this property has been in some form or another, you know, been kicking around for a year or two. And, you know, we had some previous comments as part of the prior EPC application, which the applicant really took to heart and addressed. So we're pleased with how it ended up here.
Fantastic. Any questions for Joe? And all the, there's some stuff on the one plan that I've actually, honestly, never seen before, which is the proposed sandbag coffer dam.
Oh, yeah, what that is, it's just really, it's a temporary measure to control the flow in that little water course, or in that drainage channel, just so that they can do work in the dry, do their excavation. And then they'll remove it at the, you know, when they're done, until that water course will flow again.
So if we're going to have a superstorm sand, are you going to take it out before a superstorm?
They'll have to, right, exactly. They have to keep an eye on the forecast. But fortunately, you know, it's a fairly short trench, right? There are only four utility services, so they could probably be in and out in a day or two.
So those coffer dams are only going when they're doing the trenching?
Right, exactly.
And a lot of engineers down there. No cat wives. Okay, cool. Any questions for Joe? Engineers all signed up. Thank you, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good, Matt, you're up.
If you just hit down, you should be able to, or scroll. If you hit down on the arrow key, that mouse is a little touchy. There we go.
Good evening, Matthew Pop, landscape architect from Environmental Land Solutions. And I want to prepare the landscaping plan before you. Regarding that coffer dam, they get to use quite a bit during pond dredging. So you dredging a pond, you got to divert the water around. So they get, yeah, mainly for pond dredging.
Just to start off with the site, I guess it probably won't be able to see it, but there's two buildings, a building here, building here. The access way comes in here, Elkins Highway North at the bottom. This building here, building, I would say it's under building A, proposed building A. There's parking in front, there's parking in back. So there's asphalt in the front and the back. Building here, which is to the north, up there is basically lawn up to the building. But there's asphalt all the way around the back of the building, and off to the side here. So there's quite a bit of asphalt out there now.
Today?
Today.
Right, okay, that's all coming out?
Yep, that's all coming out. There is a water course that was flagged that comes through here. See, it's fairly wide, so when you're out there, you'll see a narrow, the low-flow channel. And that's out there, so low-flow channel's kind of located more or less in the center of it, maybe about a foot or eighteen inches deep. Looks like it almost was dug by a small backhoe at one time. You know, at times of the year, it's dry. It's dry now, but... So there was lawn, basically, again, from the road up to the existing building. Now that lawn is basically, I think, uncut, so it's starting to turn into a meadow. Again, we have the neighbor off to the, to the south. We're proposing, again, the two buildings, building A, building B. From the original wetland application that we submitted, that was withdrawn. There were one building slightly closer to the water course, so we actually moved it further back in the drive. The parking areas are further back from the water course, quite a bit, further back. So that was a benefit. On the southern side of the site, there's some evergreen trees in this area here. Some big white pine here, and some maples here. There's about nine trees that get removed. Two of those are off the site. One of those trees right here, this tree right here, very large, a white pine that overhangs the neighbor's house. Very, you know, when you're out there, it's kind of scary that this tree is over her house. So she's in agreement with removing those trees.
Did you say thirty-six inch? That means the trunk is three feet wide?
It's huge.
Wow, that's big.
Yeah, and again, I think it leans towards her house, so... And the one up here is, I think it's a smaller Norway maple, non-native plant. Plan before you shows the planting plan for proposing, again, removing about nine trees. We're proposing nine shade trees, which include the birch along the water course up in the front. It's kind of an oak, and some smaller trees, understory trees in the back. So we've got nine shade trees, five understory trees, and twenty-two evergreen trees. We've got American hollies here and here. Whereas now, we've got the green giants over, between the neighbor and our building here. You know, we have the wetland buffer plantings along the water course, or actually in the, in the water course. To protect the wetland plantings, and we have boulder demarcation. So, you know, above the, to the, yeah, I guess above the boulder demarcation would be maintained as lawn, below it, or the water course side would be maintained in a natural state of meadow or plantings. We do have NOFA organic land care notes that we put on the plan for the EPC approval.
Organic land plan?
Organic land care.
No, you know, before you fertilize, you know, test the soil, things like that. Use the right plants, so... They're somewhat general. But actually, they get used quite a bit now in a lot of different towns. It becomes pretty popular. The street tree plantings up here, they're shown on the plan, but we're going to make, adjust those, or failed to adjust them with the fire marshal out on the site. That was another concern that was brought up. And then lastly, the lighting. Again, most of the lighting is just underneath the building pointing down. And we have about, I think there's twenty bollards, just low bollards, less than thirty inches right here. They have louvers, so the light points down, it's a warm tone. And mainly, the bollards are just to light the path around the building here and here. And then there's two back up here. So that's the landscaping plan. If there's any questions here, I'd be happy to answer them.
Maybe it's just me. Do you want it to, it's in the upper left-hand corner? Right, upper left, it's marked one NS. Does it show up on your chart to the bottom or there?
Yeah, it's the second plant, the black gum.
That says, up top it says...
NS.
NS, and in other words, it says BN. Oh, there it is, actually, I got it, I got it, I apologize. Yep, third line, okay.
So is there asphalt then, right up to the fence?
Back here, yes.
And the trees that are there are not on this property?
Of course, they're off the site, and that asphalt goes, you know, maybe a foot from their property. It may even go right up to the property line. So we're removing asphalt over those trees.
And there's no ability to plant more buffer there?
They've got a wired fence on the other side of our fence.
You know, we have the fence that comes across the site here. Yeah, I kind of want, people have dogs, I kind of thought, you know, it's only, you know...
So that's grass there?
Yeah, so just to take if someone has a, you know, a dog, they want to walk around a building, it'd make it suitable.
And the sidewalk, the proposed asphalt walk, that's on just the front side and the side side of building A?
No, it's on both buildings. They're almost mirrored.
Great, but it doesn't go all, then you have to go all the way around, yeah. So then you go from the asphalt side right to grass?
Yes.
Got it. So you can walk your dog around the, around the thing, you can do laps?
And maybe just lastly, or bring up, I think I forgot to mention, the parking lot. You know, the site here goes right up to the top of the bank.
So I'm a, I'm visiting, or I'm a resident and I'm walking. Where, how do I get into my building if I'm not getting there with a car?
What, architect or anyone?
Access to the site or access to the building?
Where's the elevator lobby?
How do you enter?
Do we have a...
We do have architectural plans. I think the elevator is in this...
I think it's in a little notch there, yeah.
Yeah, it's there, on these sides of the buildings. Wait, let's go to the architect ones. Oh, I have, these are two copies of the hardcover presentation. So they should go in both files.
Sure.
There we go.
So you've got an elevator here, entry, stairway. And we go to the second floor, and you'll see how it works, because there's your elevator lobby and maybe like this one and this one, that one now.
So the asphalt walks and the Ballard lights escort you to that logical entry point? Got it, okay, that's all, thank you.
Come back to the prime one if you're going to say it. Thank you. So if I'm walking my dog, I'm going down, and I live in the second floor, I'm going down those stairs, out that door to the sidewalk?
Yep.
Yep.
Correct.
That through the middle to the grass?
And you're dragging your garbage through the garage? You're making a left or a right?
Yep. Okay. Any other questions for Matt Pop?
Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think we can satisfy your interest in sidewalks along here.
No, but I'm getting, I'm getting to the grass. Oh, and here, yeah, no. You can asphalt over... You can, you can asphalt over the water course. Walk up and down. I think this is a driving location, so... I think if you gotta trade a Joe, you hop to the fence.
So I'd like to get John Canning to address it.
Hold on, Matt, 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 you're not done yet.
Matt's not done? Oh, who's got a question?
We got three on this side, go ahead.
Jordan, you know? Is there a fence on the, in between you guys and the neighbor on the west side? Yeah, there, is there a fence there?
It's on her, yeah, right, right here.
She has a fence, right?
Yes.
But you guys aren't proposing a fence on yours?
We will, a fence comes down to here.
So you will have a fence there?
Yeah. So we'll have, and then the therapibodies will be on our side of that fence.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Is, is there anything, and then the second question is to maintain the waterway going forward? Is there a maintenance plan for that specifically? So that it doesn't get filled up with tires and debris and invasives? I know when we looked at Thorndale, right, they did a similar clean-out kind of over by that brook, and they had like a three-year plan to keep cleaning it out because it's, you know, overgrown, kind of how this is, untouched. So after you clean it out once, what happens in five years? Is it not, is it just there, or do we have a plan to periodically clean this and maintain it?
I don't think our drainage and maintenance plan addresses this specific question.
Yep.
I do know that any tenants, if they're tenants, are gonna be screaming bloody murderers and there's water coming over this water course. That having a viable, functional housing development here is going to, in and of itself, take care of it. Because their cars get wet.
Right. It's like trimming the bushes in front of your house.
Yeah. The question is, their cars are gonna get wet after the fact. If they were maintained, they wouldn't get wet in the first place.
It'll happen once, and then it'll happen again.
That's what I'm trying to avoid, the once, exactly.
Yeah, well, you know, but I, I just having a formal drainage maintenance plan that says, you know, every year we're gonna do this, and how do you enforce it, et cetera? I mean, what happens is with a viable development here, those owners are gonna make sure that we don't have tires in the culvert.
Right, the landlord is.
And, you know, there was a, there was this, an August storm, what, last, August of last year, and Sean on the property at the time, and it backed up and was flowing around. And he went down there and removed some debris, and everything was fine. And, and he also went downstream and cleaned out the culvert and some other stuff that was in the Wang property. And all of a sudden, it was fine. But if you maintain this stuff, it's fine. But if you don't, there may be consequences that affect your car.
It's like landscaping.
Yeah.
Part of it, that, that water course is part of the landscaping.
Yeah.
Okay, you good?
Yeah.
Jamie, you okay? Amy? Well, so, Matt Popp, you're done.
Thank you.
All right, who's up next? Architect, John?
And Fred, we're keeping this open just for the ARB, so-
No, for EPCs?
EPC, correct.
We got the ARB notice in here.
Good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is John Canning. I work for Kimley Horn and Associates, and I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New York. I prepared the traffic and parking study for the application, which was submitted to you. As you're aware, the property is developed with two, what were formerly single-family houses, used for a little bit as office space, and is proposed to redevelop them with eight apartments. Based on industry data, the eight apartments are projected to generate four trips in the peak hour, which is a little bit less than the former use based on industry data. Peak parking demand is ten cars overnight, and eighteen parking spaces are proposed. Your applicant will speak for himself, but in the communication that was provided, these projections were termed reasonably acceptable. The owner has been out to improve the sightlines. I don't know if you were there in the past, there was a big pole with a shrub growing all over it right next to the driveway, so you couldn't see anything. So that has been removed, and when, when the flood came and he cleared out the water course, he cleaned up the property there. The minimum site, the minimum requirements for stopping site distance will be provided within the right-of-way. And we looked at the accident history for the last nine and a half years, and there were no accidents at this driveway. So it's really, you know, a relatively minor from a traffic perspective project, and I'm here to answer any questions and look forward to addressing any other issues that, that Mr. Sapola may have.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Pretty good? Pretty good? Rachel?
Yeah, well, I'm still concerned about the dump truck or the trash truck backing up into Kings North, where I know there are curves at both sides of it. Care to comment anyway about that?
I will. I don't have a solution for you. I will say that the village that I live in has dead-end streets. And basically what happens, the truck comes down Main Street, there's a driver and two guys, and the guys get off and they stop traffic, and they back into the streets, pick up the trash, and drive out. So, you know, depending on who's operating the vehicles, I'd expect that it operate in a fashion similar to that.
Okay. Pretty good answer.
Yeah.
Fair enough, two dudes.
Always one guy.
No, it is.
Two dudes.
Okay. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Now, Hardisty Hanover, you're pitching for a great W O.
Steve Sapola.
Steve, welcome, man. Just take your name to the record, sir.
Good evening, for the record, Steve Sapola, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut.
You've been with us before.
Senior traffic engineer at Hardisty Hanover. We reviewed the traffic study prepared by Kimley Horn dated March thirteenth, and then their response to comments April twenty-fifth. We concur with their findings that their site, the proposed site traffic for the residential will be a slight decrease from what's there currently existing, the, the office. With that slight reduction, we don't anticipate any significant impacts to traffic operations on the road as it's gonna be a reduction in traffic. Also, per their report, they provide more than sufficient onsite parking to beat both the I T E parking rates as well as the town code. We reviewed the updated sightline information provided, and we concur with the findings that there is sufficient stopping site distance in both directions for the proposed driveway. And we agree that it actually is an improvement from what was previously there, now that the, the corners are cleared out. And as stated, there's, I believe, one accident in the vicinity of the driveway over nine years, so we don't see a concern with, with this development from, from that aspect. I did have one question. How, how high is the parking garage?
It's eight feet, a- To allow a van.
Okay, yeah.
A handicapped accessible van.
So that would be able to allow like, like an Amazon van or something like that to be able to, to, to make like a K turn to back into onsite?
I think it might accommodate an Amazon van.
Okay, yeah.
But, but failing that, it would, they would pull in and back out, I suspect.
Or back, or they would back into the site and then pull out straight? Okay. Is there any-
You okay with that?
Yes, no, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, yes.
Okay. And then your letter that stated April twenty-first is also the onsite, uh, no, site dis-, planning, which should be updated, so that's been done?
Uh, yes, in the April twenty-fifth response to comments, they, they provided us updated information, the speed data, and we reviewed it, and we concur with their findings.
Fantastic, thank you. Any questions for Steve?
I will not beat a dead horse.
I've got a question on garbage. Now, can it back in?
He's gonna say the two dudes, too. Thanks, Steve, appreciate it.
No problem.
And the Kings Highway tennis is oriented so that the exit curb cut, the way they send the traffic flow, is further away from this property.
Correct.
There won't be any-
The entry is the closest, and the exit is, it's much further away.
So it's a lot easier to exit Kings Highway.
The exit is on a straightaway, you don't really see the curve, so I don't think that's an issue.
Cool.
You're gonna get a trade or Joe's there.
May I?
I don't think the curb is an issue.
So the architect, architect's not here?
Architect's not here, he's in Florida repairing his house that got trashed in the most recent hurricane. But he sends his condolences, he wishes he were here, so...
Do you want to discover the architectures real quick?
Um, sure.
Let's flip through them?
Let me go to-
Bingo.
Uh, no, that was-
That's what I was gonna-
Here we go. Okay, so, architectials.
Want something else to do besides yourself?
No, I can handle this. Basically, we've got, come in, there's an entrance here, entrance there. You've got eight parking spaces, including handicap van space. The height is, I think, eight and a half. Whatever the code requires for handicapped accessible vans, that's what we have. And I think that may permit delivery vehicles, at least the smaller ones, to back in when they use the loading zone for deliveries. In any event, that's, that's the space that we have. Parking underneath, elevator, stairway, entry, and that pops up all three floors. This is enclosed so that we don't get rain in, which then creates all sorts of stormwater drainage problems and things like this. This will be clean, and there, there are some windows, et cetera, as required by code, and the whole building meets fire safety code requirements. Let me just go, anyway.
How many handicap spaces are they required to have?
No, escape first of all.
It's really up to the building official, there's no, there's no specific regulation.
Oh, you can use the air units, just many?
Correct.
Okay.
And is that the height right, regulation?
The height regulation for the garage?
For the handicap parking structure?
Yeah, that's a, that's a state regulation, or it's a, it's something, it's one of the many codes that we have to adhere to. If we're having a handicapped accessible space under a building, it must meet handicap van accessible height requirements.
They wouldn't get building progress.
Because typically it would be more like a-
No, I was asking, of course.
Where are the mailboxes?
That I can't speak to.
Bike rack?
I don't-
The bike rack?
Those are details we didn't get to yet. But I would expect they'd be in the lower lobby.
That's what I was-
I, I just, that's the logic.
I think by the federal law, you have to have a-
And, so then you have two units on each floor as you go up, and then there's a rooftop with equipment. All equipment is going on the rooftop, it's all electric. And-
The building's all electric, there's no gas?
There's no what?
Gas? Gas heat, it's electric heat?
Uh, heat pump exterior units. So it's all heat pumps. So, that's, actually works really well. Technology's state of the art now, so, that's what we have.
The artist renovations, elevations, please. Do you blew through them?
I blew through them, okay. Oh, wrong one, escape.
Escape.
Why?
The nicks are playing, hurry up.
There you go.
Yeah, that's true.
Now, well?
You got two hours, you're knocking on two hours, brother. One more. One more.
Uh, gotta go back to-
But you had them.
No, that's in the beginning.
It's in the beginning. Oh, it's up here.
It's a pretty building, so there you go.
There we go.
Bingo.
Okay. So, we've got a stone veneer on the parking, and then it's hardy board. And the colors in this rendering are nothing like the colors that ARB saw. They had samples, and it's actually very attractive.
The paint chips in the bottom?
Yeah, but the paint chips don't render the way in this. It just, it looks drab, and it's not. It was, it's got some excitement to it.
What's the next one, look like, do the next one?
Yeah, and he raised the corners because we had more equipment that was going up there originally. That, this is the line of the roof, and then we raised it a little bit. But ARB made us modify windows so that we had, so it, it's got some interest. It's a, it's a, I think it's a handsome building.
Because the utilities are on this roof, do we need any safety or access about them?
How do you get up to the roof?
How do you get up to the roof?
Is that ready or something? Cause it looks like you're outside.
That I don't know, but I would expect it'd be from the entry.
Go back to the, go back to the roof.
Yeah. Kick wall, so you know you're not just walking right off the edge.
Yeah, there, there may be some regulations in the building code relative to that. Yeah. It's just attracted to many roofs and looks over the edge. Yeah. That one, you put back, you had it.
Cause they're gonna have to service them there.
Yeah. You had it, second one.
Well, here's, I don't see a rooftop access there.
There's a, there's a hatch inside the, kind of like a pull-down stairs, but it's more heavy-duty kind of thing, there's access.
Well, just say what's-
It's over the stairwell.
You can't see it in there.
Try, you can't speak my shit, for the upset.
I didn't hear it.
No, flip to the floor plan, the roof plan. Yeah, go to the roof plan, if you keep blowing through, we have the electrical stuff. Bingo, stop. You get sticky fingers.
Jesus.
Then you can see her, it's the mouse and the whole thing.
It is very sensitive.
Stop. So this is your hatch, and it's mirrored, obviously, on the same side, or same location on the door. So it's, that's in the stairwell, that's it?
That's in the stairwell, yeah, I agree with mine.
You good? All right.
We're good, except I need to do the summary.
Yeah, got your summary of your approvals. Hey, why don't you do that earlier?
Okay, back one more.
You wanna do the summary?
Yeah, summary. Okay. So, summary, the zoning amendment, we think it's appropriate for the G B zone. This site is consistent with other P and Z regs, consistent with the plan of conservation and development. We meet the requirements for business site plan approval and special permit approval and the other approvals. We received a favorable ARB report. EPC should be approving it in early June. We've addressed parking, traffic, stormwater, and treatment, landscaping, and lighting. So the, let's go to, I think-
Did ARB approve your ballards, all your ballards?
They didn't speak to that. In fact, they said they want us to come back for lighting, even though it was there on the plans. And apparently it wasn't discussed, is that right?
It wasn't discussed, they were into-
Sean Shay spoke then, he said it wasn't discussed, he was at the ARB meeting.
But it was on the plan. So you need another ARB approval?
We're not going back to them for this. Sorry, we've been there-
You made your front page a Stanford advocate with it.
I know, but you guys can approve the lighting.
I know.
You, you don't need a favorable report from ARB to do that. The approvals we need, and this is sort of roadmap to get us home. We need the zoning amendments for Exhibit A, we need business site plan for Section 1020, special permit for Section 1005. We need approval under Section 585, the inclusionary zoning. This is the crib sheet for you, Fred. The following changes will have no adverse impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the public in general and the immediate neighborhood. That's the standard for inclusionary zoning variations to allow us to have a three-story building and building height of thirty-one point five. You can go up to thirty-two point five or thirty-one. The height and bulk of the proposed building does not adversely impact a budding, if you wanna use neighbor, nearby residential properties, so the building coverage may increase from twenty-five to thirty-two point sixty-two. That's, you can go up to thirty-five point seven or something like three-seven point five. We're at thirty-two point sixty-two. We need a finding, the following reductions improve functionality of the site plan with no adverse impact on nearby residential uses. Seven oh six, seven sixty-six, a ten-foot rear guard setback. Nine oh six six C, parking setback of zero. Nine forty-five, reduced parking buffer of zero. And a finding under Section 909, the proposed loading zone, which is twelve feet by thirty feet instead of fifteen by thirty, is suitable for the project. And frankly, why would you want a fifteen-foot loading zone on this project? It's totally not necessary, so.
Okay. And what's your proposal for the affordable unit? You have to give us one point two, one point one two?
Whatever the per- integer is, we're happy to pay a fee in lieu. We had discussed that earlier, sort of off the record. It's up to you guys, if you want us to make one of the, restrict one of the units, we're happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Cause you're definitely gonna give us point one two.
Yeah, and we've gotta give you a check for that.
Great, so we might just take the full cash for the other, okay? Because you're not, you're definitely a billoner of offset.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Wiley before we wrap this up after one hour and fifty-one minutes? Two hours, yeah. If any general public here want to speak to this application? Joe Canis, you're a public guy. Come on. You're good, all right. Amy, you good?
My overriding question I've already stated.
Anything Fred missing?
All set.
Fantastic. I mean, extension motion. That's right, we're not closing this thing.
Okay.
You keep it open.
Keep it open to get E P C.
E P C, and then when we close it, it will be two second meeting.
Correct.
All right, that's the end of that presentation. Thank you very much for your detail. It's got to get on E P C.
Yeah, it's going to be immediately or continued to. Let's see when. Looks like this is going to be.
It's got to be June tenth, it's the earliest.
We're going to continue it to June twenty-fourth, actually. It's looking like we're going to cancel the tenth.
Wiley, you doing it?
Yeah. I'm sorry?
The hearing will be continued to June twenty-fourth in room two oh six.
June twenty-fourth, okay.
Here in Town Hall.
All right.
So it's, you got to see it, June third, which you haven't been to E P C yet.
Right.
Then June tenth, you probably had to cancel because of the whole business.
Right.
And the next one after that is.
The twenty-fourth.
There's nothing between the tenth and the twenty-fourth.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's good by you?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, everybody. Go for it.
Next time, the gentlemen, let's go through this one. Coastal Site Plan Review Number three seven one A's and Apple, Clutch Town Prevention Application Number three, four thirty-three A's and Apple, Bank Town Regading Application. Number five eighty-eight, also known as P L twenty-five to thirty-six. Charles and Kristen Collier at sixty-five Pear Tree Point Road. Proposed to construct retaining walls and landscape steps in form of late site development activities within regulated areas, including minor regading activity to accommodate the improvements. The zero point six seven, plus or minus acre subject properties on the west side of Pear Tree Point Road. Approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty feet north, it's intersection with Cream Road. And it's shown on Sessos Matt Number sixty, is Latin sixty, in the R one Z. Wiley, please, I think he's here to present this to us. This house was renovated in the last, I want to say eighteen months.
Correct.
It's really pretty, they did a fantastic job.
It's a really special spot.
Yeah, and it was like a guest house of the house across the street.
Right, they own the property up across the street.
And next door to the, was it the north? Next door to the left is where Hans Mendy's.
Yes.
Dock is, that dock we keep talking about.
The dock plant, yeah.
So Fred, what do you got?
Yeah, this application was submitted in conformance with Section eight ten, eight twenty, and eight, eight twenty, and eight fifty of the Dorian zoning regulations. Under our coastal site plan flood damage prevention and landfilling and regrading requirements. The application was referred out to Joe Canis of Ty and Bond. He submitted comments for the record dated May twenty-third and most recently, May twenty-seventh endorsing the project. It was also referred out to Mike Viti, the building official. He submitted comments for the record dated May eighth, noting no issue with the application. Steve, as you noted, the application is for demolition of existing stairway and construction of, of two new retaining walls to stabilize the slope on the property, including construction of a walkway and new stairs. All of this designed in conformance with Section eight twenty of the regulations relative to our flood regulations. A portion of the improvements are within the A E flood zone at elevation fourteen. We have Wiley here to explain the details.
So, this sheet that I just gave you highlights the new retaining laws, which are basically at the south end. North is up here, south is down here. Road, river, houses here.
Streets to the south, right?
This way.
Yeah.
Okay. So, what happens? We have existing stone walls and we're going to add these two here. It's about a hundred feet, linear feet, a little over a hundred linear feet of retaining wall. Each is four feet high max. And they're about eight feet apart. And there's an eight-inch grade differential between the top of this wall to the base of this wall. And they're going to be anchored down with a very substantial footings. You can see that in the design details. And we're redoing the stairs here and the steps down to this landing. This patio is fabulous. It's just an amazing place to be hanging out. And they're also proposing to modify the stair rails to glass and stainless steel. And that's a part of what's going on. The, so, this is sort of a blow up from the architect's plan. These steps are new. These steps are new. And there's new glass railings, et cetera, wind screens there. This is different architect's view. This is from the water looking at the fences, the retaining walls. It's four feet of exposed rock that is applied as a veneer to poured concrete. So the poured concrete is down, I don't know, at least four feet. And it's got a four-foot, nine-inch footing for this four feet of exposed fence.
It should be thirty-nine inches, right?
Well, I, I think it's engineered a little higher, but this is Rob, this is Rob's bailiwick, not mine. And so, but that's what the architects expect from it, in the plans. So, that's four nine that he calls out here on the footing. But whatever works, we're happy to get approved. And Rob has done the coastal site plan review report and put in the soil and erosion controls to make sure we don't interfere with the environment.
Welcome, Rob.
Hello, for the record, Rob Frangione, Frangione Engineering, Licensed Professional Engineer, Connecticut. I don't plan to speak for forty-five minutes and really, you know.
Hey, gosh, try to get him to sit down.
So the, the bottom of the footing's got to be below frost, which is forty-two inches. I think he's got it a little deeper because being on a slope on the low side, it's, it's got to have the cover of the forty-two. But on the, on the high side, it's going to be deeper. Also probably because of the sloping side. I didn't design the walls, but having designed walls myself, kind of the answer. The width of the footing tends to be about two-thirds the height of the wall. And so then it goes deep and then you go back. So that's probably why it's as deep as it is, instead of just being forty-two inches. As far as the site plan goes, we've got minimal site disturbance, about thirty-two hundred square feet, less than a tenth of an acre. There's about thirty-three yards of fill by the time these walls get put in. It's really de minimis site activity. As far as the erosion controls, we're planning on putting core logs on the top of the wall. The existing wall is going to stay. And that'll just kind of, if there's any disturbance in that small area, because each wall is only about fifty feet long, so it's such a small area, that'll stop stuff from falling over into the water. And then silt fences for the construction access. We showed the construction access where we did coming off the driveway as opposed to that other curb cut. I just didn't think there was enough room to get machinery in that other curb cut. And then there's a wall there, and it just, it didn't make much sense to me. So, you know, yes, we got to do some yard restoration, but again, it's less than a tenth of an acre, so. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Hey, Wiley, the only thing I want to ask about is, is this the property or is it the next one where the shoreline is really close to the road? If you're going down the street.
This one is, is, the survey shows, it gets, I mean, our driveway entrance is down here. And this is, the distance here is, I don't know, thirteen, five, twenty. So you'd say forty-five or fifty feet at this end, which is a budding Justin, Justin Scott. And, but it's the Hans Mendy property, it's the one that's really narrow, right? It's here and then gets narrow and then expands out to that platform where they're going to put the dock.
Because I just want, you know, I mean, I know it's your client, Hans Mendy is or was your client. Someday, I think there's going to be a, a guardrail put there. You know, because it's, it's really close.
Yeah.
That, that shoreline gets eroded at all, it's going to take out the road. If somebody goes flying down there, they do, go up to Row Eight and they land up in a drink all the time.
Yeah.
That's what's going to happen.
That, that could happen.
But that's not your property, it's Hans Mendy's.
I don't think that's going to be our property and we're, oh, we've got sixty feet at the other end. And it's relative, it actually rises a little bit to the house here.
It's straight road too, so.
Yeah. It's what, Rob?
The road's straight. I mean, are we worried about the road or are we worried about the driveway?
We're worried about the road because the next curve is where it, it goes.
Yeah, I mean, it's a straight shot across the property, so I don't see that.
Because I called you about Hans Mendy's.
Yeah.
And that's, that's already switched again.
It's switched.
What I'm talking about is the road, if you go down there, you go to home speed limit, the road ends, it's like six inches from the drop. And there's no guardrail there. As you go another, you know, ten yards further, then comes a stone wall.
Yeah, and the stone wall's intimidating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I actually think there's more precarious spots on the other side of Rings End Bridge as you go up Goodwise River.
Yeah, but see, I never go that way.
There's, there's some more precarious spots over there.
The turns and they fly everywhere.
Yes, they do.
I just want, it's, I'm, I'm, yeah, as.
I, I wouldn't be surprised if guardrails are installed at some point, particularly on Hans's property. And further down, where's the, the access to the dock that is south of Hans's property.
Because if we need you, we're going to call you, which has got to be edge to edge.
I'm a phone call away.
I know, thank you, appreciate that. Any questions for these guys? This is pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Is Joe Canis, is he going to talk on this one at all? You sound open to this thing? Give us your blessing.
For the record, Joe Canis, Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of Connecticut. Reviewed the application at the request of the department and everything was fine. You know, we had some very minor comments, but it complies with the town's regulations, so no further comments on this one.
Any questions, Joe? Good?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Anybody in the general public here? Guys, you good? You good? We're good? All right. With that said, enter the motion to close. Amy makes a motion, looking for a second. Jamie makes the second open favor. Here's the. We might deliberate this one tonight, takes more than thirty seconds.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, deliberate, right. That's the end of the public hearing, let's wish the general meeting deliberations only on any public hearing closed, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. I, I suggest that we deliberate on the application, just said, any questions on that one? Oh, good. Good. All right, staff, can you wrap an approval of the new rock walls for my, our associate or esteemed colleague, esteemed counselor, Wiley, please, this guy?
We will, we'll have that draft for you at an upcoming meeting, likely.
June thirty or twenty-fourth?
Possibly June tw- June third, yes.
June third.
Yeah.
Get your, get your rock walls in so they can enjoy it for the Fourth of July. All right?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Next, approval minutes, April twenty-second, are here.
I did have approval Monday's minutes, April twenty-second.
What I had in my eye cut at the beginning is, you have an attendance. You're missing Jamie and George. But Jamie and George closed the, closed the, closed the hearing. So, were you guys there?
I don't think I was there, April twenty-second.
Jamie, were you there?
No, I was not. No, I was not there on the twenty-second.
Actually, I don't think I was.
You were there? You want to tell your.
I think I'm, I would have to look at the calendar.
It's all right, so, so if you go to page twenty-nine.
Yeah, it might be.
No other business, Mrs. Onick and Mr. Radley closed the hearing.
Oh, okay.
Nice, I mean, the technical.
Either they don't, either it's wrong, the front page is wrong or the last page.
Got it.
Okay, sorry.
She had thought I'd be closing here. Just belong to this real quick, it's wonder, wonder it got pulled, the application. And we have the aesthetics at Bossa Prose Road, right? Delphill Island, Ridge Acres, I didn't really see anything. Then we have a bunch of resolutions, which is, we can't change those at five thirty-seven, Inwood. Eighty-one Inwood Road, can't change that. And that's the majority of it. There's another resolution in there for two Roger Road. Great, and then at the end, another resolution for one seventy-five, Minnesota. Change report, I talked about, the minute I messed up, net or prove that, it's got to change that last, but no other business. Do you want it, you know who that is now that closed, or you wanted to switch it for next time?
We will, we can verify it and just make the change, or do you, do you want to bring it back before the commission?
That was easier for you.
Verify, make the change.
I think we'll verify and make the change.
Approve as amended.
Yeah.
Yes, I look for a motion to approve as amended with the verified change of page. Amy makes a, Amy makes a motion, Adam makes a second open favor. Do you have who, your minutes are approved as amended?
Adam abstained.
Okay, George abstained, and Jamie, did you abstain?
No, I watched every meeting.
Okay, so she voted yes, so you have.
She's our A-plus student.
Yeah, she's relieved, it's four to, four to one.
Got it.
Four to zero to one, because George abstained. Next minutes, we have town plan and conservation development, and we have a resolution that you can't change, another resolution that you can't change. Adam, which is retired, who can't watch, can't engage. Director's report, that's, that's something we have to talk about a little bit tonight for a little, a few minutes. Change report, we just talked about some, a couple of things on the market, and director's report, and Fred talked about that. Questions, comments, type, postscript, new series on this one? Looking for a motion to approve I submitted. Adam makes a motion, George, I think, made the second, open favor. Motion to approve five to zero to zero, okay? Next, I'll make a general change report. The biggest thing on the change report today is, over the weekend and since Thursday, I've been bombarded with emails and text messages and whatnot about all the stuff that's going on in the state house. I, I don't know how they do business up there, and that's got nothing to do with me, I'm trying to make a statement, but I don't know how you can put out a bill with a, a document with no wording in it. And it came out today. And I think George made one, willing to say, how do they do that? I don't know.
I need a way to run all the legislative.
That, that bill hit the floor today. And as, maybe I was in real time, and I think you got it too. As the bill hit the floor, there's, there's a group called COST, which is Community Council of Small Towns. They put out an email being adamantly against it. How it shaped that, I don't know. We got a bunch of emails and text messages from people, if you want to watch it live and in person, TV seventy-nine or whatever it is. And I think Jamie might have watched it live.
I'm sure it's still going now, they intended to keep it.
It's, it's.
Yeah.
I got, I got some phone calls and messages from legislators asking me to pitch in. The one thing that, that I don't understand is they want to build, they want to allow developers to build apartment buildings multifamily with no parking. I don't get that at all.
That's the only thing you don't understand.
To me, if, if you're the city of Hartford, or the city of New Haven, or you're any city, and you build four hundred and forty unit apartment building with no parking, that means the city's going to have to build a municipal garage. And that makes no sense. I have a client, it's actually, really not a client, but it's a developer I work with named Elcor. They've worked their brains to figure out how to get as much parking in buildings as possible, which is, they do it less expensively. If you don't have one parking space for apartments, it, it doesn't work. In our town, these gentlemen are adding eighteen parking spaces, of which there's two for each unit. And other developers, they've added additional parking. Parking makes, provides revenue. Yes, it's expensive to build, but you cannot, no one's going to rent an apartment building without parking. This is not New York City. It's not. And it never will be, and I hope it never is, but I don't know how that goes through. And I don't know whoever proposed it. And then the flip side is, you got to build municipal parking garage. Municipal parking garage is in downtown Bridgeport, one of the ugliest things I've ever seen in my life. And they're actually scary.
Yeah.
So that's one of the big things on there. The other fair share is still floating around. And maybe, maybe you can speak to this, but, or Fred. They threw all these other mini bills into this big mega bill, and I don't really know how it goes. I just remember watching TV when I was a kid, that was called Pork Bellies or Pork Inside There. Where to get one approved, you have to get the other one approved. I don't know how it works. But fair share is in there. And Darien's fair share, like we said, was one thousand, one hundred ninety-seven affordable units.
Right, yeah, in that, in that range of eleven to twelve hundred units.
It's, I've talked to our selectmen about it a bunch of times, and, you know, it's a non-story for our town. We have no place to put them. There's one spot in town, and everybody knows where it is. Do you want to add anything to that? Do you want to say for the director's report? Because I want to know, I know you watch it too. Anything to add, Jamie?
The fiscal note was empty also, so the financial piece of that bill came out after it went through appropriations, which is also interesting.
So it's an unfunded mandate, is that what it is?
Well, I mean, it was, it was approved by appropriations without the fiscal notes attached. So they just left it open for anything to be attached.
Of course.
Yeah.
It, it, I'm actually speaking.
Yeah, so as we speak, they're, they're up in Hartford, in their chambers discussing it right now. So it's, you know, maybe the vote will happen in the middle of the night tonight, or tomorrow, or who knows when, but.
And I do get phone calls from legislators, people saying, you know, how many, how many units have you built in Darien over the last ten years? And how many are on the dock, and how many of this? It's just because I think people are making speeches and they need to know the information. You know, when they're, they're up on the podium in the next ten minutes, they won't know. And I think the stuff, I don't know if it flies fast or it flies slow, but it's, you can't have a prepared speech in advance.
From what I understand of the situation, towns are going to be responsible for building twenty-five percent of the fair share number that is, is in, is in that bill.
In how many years, though?
Over a ten-year period, I believe.
And then it's reassessed.
And then it's reassessed after that. But twenty-five percent of that eleven or twelve hundred over the next ten years.
And you have to consider, I mean, whatever one's saying too, is that you don't, you don't usually construct just affordable buildings. You know, we have fourteen percent. So you consider the total number of units. That would actually be required to reach that affordable number, it's much higher.
Right.
But the affordable number is different statewide, right? I mean, for us, if we're going to get fourteen affordable units, you have to build a hundred unit building.
That's, yeah.
Right?
Point, yeah, yeah.
Right?
Right, correct. Yeah, it's, it's not the same for every community. Some communities don't require any affordable housing.
There's no inclusion.
You know, others are ten percent, some are twelve percent or fourteen percent, so it varies.
At least Stanford's like five.
Yeah, it varies by community. But, yeah, I mean, there's really four main pillars of this, this, this bill. One being fair share, the second being desegregate Connecticut's live-work-ride proposal.
Which is the transit-oriented.
Transit-oriented development. The third being.
They changed their name though, right? Desegregate Connecticut, is that called desegregate Connecticut?
They are.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, they're still called.
That was an opt-in portion of it, right?
All those are gone, those opt-ins, opt-out things, but that stuff's gone.
It's the infrastructure funding.
Right, yeah, it's all, it's all tied to the state discretionary funding. It's, the TOD isn't going to be pushed on communities, but without, without communities implementing that, you're going to be left out of the discretionary state funding.
So that's the argument from the Darien side is, we get, I think, four percent of funding. I mean, you can count, and there's more people, and there's, we don't get a whole lot of funding from the state. So we're, they're given, they're taking something away from us that we don't use anymore.
I like the argument that we're not deprioritizing you, we're just not prioritizing.
And that was one, what's the fourth pillar of the party?
The governor's bill is.
No, you said there was four pillars of the mega bill, which is House Bill for five thousand two.
So live-work-ride, fair share, the governor's bill is in there as well, which is, Jamie, do you remember what the governor's bill is called?
I don't.
I can't remember it off the top of my head, and then.
And then parking, the parking thing's in there.
Well, parking is tied to, the parking is tied to a few of those bills that appears in.
Various iterations.
Various iterations.
Is the other one the zoning with, with over one acre zoning?
That's out.
That's out.
It's a commercial of residential, right?
That as of right might still be in.
The, is it the, anything that's basically defunct can be.
That's been vacant, right, yeah.
It has been vacant, then it's by, by right.
As of right.
As of right, yeah.
That's on there.
This whole, this whole one oh four, one oh eight, Old Kings Highway is all special planning. And we have all kinds of discretion to prove everything. Most of the stuff that's in this bill is all as of right, there's nothing. I mean, I, in our town, we talked about it earlier, there's basically nothing that's built as of right, except for a single-family house, not a two-acre lot or a one-acre lot. There's the essence of special planning.
Yeah, it, it takes a lot, it takes a lot away from municipalities. It takes a lot away from decision-making in municipalities and planning and zoning commissions, other boards and commissions.
The only last thing we got to move on, because it's getting late, but the only thing I want to say again is, if you hear the word form-based zoning, run away. Bridgeport has it and Portchester has it. And I, like, we were here last meeting, I read it. The form-based zoning is the most difficult thing to actually read and understand. And I don't know who wrote it, I don't know who did it, but some company out there must have come up with a template and sold it to towns.
What is it called?
Called Form-Based Zoning.
Form, F-O-R.
F-O-R-M, yes. And it's, I've looked at it many times, and I do not understand it. And I've been doing this for thirty-five years, I'm not that old. I don't get it. I mean, in our zoning code, what Fred did, and it's probably five years ago, you did those cheat sheets in the back where it's eight and a half by, it's, what, I look by fourteen paper? And it says part one, all the things, and all that stuff doesn't exist. Portchester, they spent millions and millions of dollars on doing it, and then they just put it in the garbage. And I think Bridgeport did the same thing. And the last thing I would want Darien to do was follow what Portchester does and what Bridgeport does.
Yeah.
Why would we?
Norwax just did it to a large extent as well.
Norwax is really confusing.
Is it in this bill?
Yes, it says they want to do form-based housing. And there was something else, there was a joke that came through today about, about, something about municipal parking, and if you park someplace, then your car gets towed. I don't know how hard the zoning agency gets at the towing, but, I don't know. Because somebody said that wreckers or the people that drive tow trucks are wreckers, they're advocating for that.
Yeah, there was a whole separate thing about the towing industry in Connecticut, I guess.
So if anybody has a relationship with any legislator out there, just call them, email them, text them, give them your opinions. Because it's, I don't, I don't really have that many relationships with legislators up there.
Before like three AM today.
They're texting me. I mean, I started getting hit last night at eleven o'clock at night, on a Sunday night. So that's it for me, it's just, it's important.
No, no, it's just one way to, it just sounds, yep.
Any directors, any questions for you on anything? Directors, you're for it, anything for you?
Only that, we're, our next meeting is scheduled for June third. That evening, we're going to be considering, or the commission's going to be considering the zoning amendments, prohibiting smoke and vape shops in town. And then a couple of public hearings.
Public hearings and tattoo parlors.
Or one public hearing, I'm sorry?
And tattoo parlors, I think, right?
Correct, yeah, smoke, smoking vape shops and tattoo parlors as well, correct. And then, like I said, it looks like, it looks like at this time, we're going to be canceling the meeting on the tenth, on June tenth. And then June twenty-fourth is going to be a very full night with public hearings, as well as meeting with Neil of Hardisting Hanover on the next P O C D update.
So none of the people that are on June twenty-fourth are ready for June tenth?
Yeah, it just, it, it became a timing issue with, with the submission of the, of the applications.
Could you have P O C D to the time?
Maybe just do it virtually?
At least bang that hour out? I mean, I can't be here on the tenth either way, so I'm just, just mowing you guys down. But I mean, like, that, that's the kind of update, we could do over Zoom and just have a general meeting, that one item. Get the hour out of the way.
Yeah.
This way, the next meeting, you're not starting the meeting essentially eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Neil's an hour.
Yeah.
He's definitely forty-five minutes to an hour.
Yeah.
So.
That's a good idea.
Should we try to?
And do it virtually, it won't be a public hearing.
It's just a general meeting, because it's a P O C D, so it's not like.
Yeah.
Yeah, if everyone wants to try and schedule a Zoom meeting with Neil.
I would schedule a Zoom meeting, that's a general meeting. I do not want to schedule Zoom public hearings.
No, no, not for that P O C D, and that'd be the only, I actually.
We're going to listen to him talk for an hour and pepper him with questions and resume.
So what date are we talking about doing that?
June tenth.
It would be June tenth, yeah.
The twenty-fourth is going to be long, we can't afford to start.
There's probably six public hearings that night.
Yeah, we had two tonight, it's, or night three, I believe, two and a half.
We had a two for one, though.
If some of, if some of those hearings for the twenty-fourth need to get kicked over to the next, to the first July meeting, then that wouldn't, that won't be an issue.
Won't be an issue, but we want to, we're going on vacation August first.
Yeah.
You know, don't be calling, don't be calling my friend Amy Parsanti back from Martha's Vineyard.
Nope, not, not there.
She's going first, she's not coming.
Right.
The first meeting in July would be the eighth, which is after the Fourth of July holiday, yeah.
Is there a meeting at first?
It's the eighth, then the fifteenth?
July first, no.
Yeah, the first one in July.
No.
July one.
There's no meeting July one. It's the eighth, the sixteenth, and the twenty-ninth.
Because the commission breaks in August, we try to, we'll try to schedule as many of the public hearings as we can for that, either.
Two weeks before.
Right.
So you can do the resolution, you can close it.
Right, so either that, the first and second meetings in July, so we can. So we can close it out by the last meeting in July.
Right, right. Is there any municipal stuff that's coming up that's important? No, right, we've got Allen's done, and there's no schools, we haven't built any school system, right?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that.
If the trees get cleared, and we already did everything about the trees and the roads and all that stuff.
Yeah, once they get through that.
The beaches are done.
Beaches are done.
Yeah.
Draw a ha-ha, but we did our part.
We did, that's what I'm saying. They're not done at all, but our bit of it is done, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's just, I mean, because we have nothing, then we come back.
Is the Hanson River Bridge open? I haven't been about it.
Yes.
In a week or so, if it is open?
It's open already, yeah.
On time, on time, I don't know, pushing.
Yep, that's great.
Okay, with that said or not said, any other business? We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, with that said or not said, enter the motion to close. I think Jamie makes the motion to close, looking for a second. Amy Parsanti makes a second, all in favor. Hearing's closed. Thank you, TV seventy-nine, thank you, Karen.